Welcome to the February 11th meeting of the Planning, Frankfurt Franklin County Planning Commission. We're happy that everyone is able to join us. We have a new member that is an old familiar face that we need to introduce. Mayor William Bill, as we know him, May, has joined us as the Governor's appointee to the Frankfurt Franklin County Planning Commission. Ms. Sewell, have you sworn in the mayor?
I got sworn in by Mayor Wilkerson. And we'll come down and sign the papers, but I had already asked, I didn't know what to do if I needed to be sworn in, if I get in advance or get sworn in at the main. So I talked to Vicki earlier and said that we did that. My wife was a witness if we need that. Okay, well, I'm honored to be here with you guys, especially Mr. Chairman, you and your years of service, and Mr. Terrell, and Ms. Cross, and let's see, I'm looking to see if the other appointees, Mr. Boggs, of course, and Tim, Mr. Lusher, I think, were our city appointed. It was an honor to get to appoint you guys, and I appreciated your service and now to serve with you. So, and I appreciate Governor having confidence in me to take this position. I'm honored to do it, as well as our county members, too. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're, we're ready. Mr. Logan, you satisfied?
I just want to make sure that Mayor May hadn't fought any duels since the last time he was sworn in, and without that, I think we're in good shape.
I can, I can attest to that, Mr. Logan. Thank you, sir, for checking.
I'm ready.
All right, well, in that case, Ms. Sewell, if you will, let's do the roll call.
Can't hear her. She's not like.
Okay, I thought maybe I was the only one that was talking. We are unable to hear you.
Oh, no.
You might need to log out and log back in. We're still unable. We're unable to hear still. Eric, are you in contact with Bobby? See if there's something happening?
I think Vicki must have just logged off to log back on, and that's usually what does it. So there she comes back.
Okay. It's. No, Ms. Sewell, it's, it's still not working.
Vicki, can you use your, try to use your phone, I guess, as audio? I know that sometimes complicates matters.
Yeah, Vicki, if you go to the email that Eric sent this afternoon, there's a number on there that you can dial in and then use the access code to do audio.
I can't, I can't, I can't.
There's something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, so. Let me get, get out of here.
Yeah, you're just echoing now, but we can hear you. If you, I don't know if you need to turn down the audio on, or, or.
That works for me. I'm back in.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, if you will call the roll, please.
I will. Kate Bennett.
Well, Kate is replaced by the mayor.
Oh, that, no. Oh, that, that's right. I'm sorry. David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Pete Lee.
Here.
Paul Looney.
Here.
Tim Lusher.
Here.
William May, Jr.
Mayor, okay.
It took me a second to get, I was trying to, I couldn't get my mouse work. I am here. Thank you.
Here.
Charles Stewart.
Here.
Jim Terrell.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Teron Jackson.
Here.
Quorum of 11.
For the quorum of 11, we want to call the meeting to order. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January 14, 2021 meeting, please. As everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from January, and what's your pledge?
I believe we approve.
We have a motion, and who did the second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Ms. Sewell, did you get the second?
I don't know who that was, no.
Charles Stewart.
Okay, thank you, Charles.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that the minutes, January 14, be approved. There is, they're in a discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the payment of bills. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Russell Wright, the motion. Patty Cross, the second. Move properly, second. Are there questions on motion?
Make sure it's the amended, it's the amended version of the bills, please.
Yes. Questions on motion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carries. We paid two bills. Next on the agenda are staff items. Eric, Robert.
What we've sent to you all is the latest audit performed by Charles T. Mitchell Company. Mr. McLavick is here. I guess he can give you all a quick overview, and then you're welcome to ask any questions you may have about that, and I'm happy to turn it over to Greg. And when you go from there.
Okay, does, you all should have had a chance hopefully to look at the report. We issued a clean opinion, and that's all that really matters. You look at page, page eight of the PDF, you'll see the assets. The biggest number on there is the accounts receivable, both of city and county, paid their contribution actually the first week of July. So we set that up as a receivable. Next page, page nine, shows the income statement. You'll see the charges for services was down a little bit from the prior year. Your expenses were up just a little bit. Insurance was paid for two years prior year. So your change in net position or net income was almost $16,000. Pretty basic, pretty simple. Not much else to discuss, really. Appreciate Vicki working with Logan from my, Logan Klaus from my office to get the audit done, and that's about it.
Are there questions for Mr. McLavick, please? I don't see any. Greg, I have one question just for the education of commission. What is our fund balance coming into 2021?
Well, to, to start, July 1st, 70, almost 75,000.
And that's with no outstanding liability?
Basically, yep.
Okay.
You had 15,000 cash in this, or 19,000 cash, plus you had the city and county, you received that money after the year, so that's a receivable. So that's about $75,000.
Okay. Are there other questions? Hearing none, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the audit report?
So move. I'll second.
Motion, is there a second? Okay, Jackson, second. Motion to accept the audit report. The questions on the motion. Are the questions on the motion? Hearing none, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Greg. Next on the agenda is a recommendation from the nominating committee. Mr. Lee, I believe that's you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The nominate committee for officers for this year, for 2021, the nominate committee was myself, Ms. Cross, and Mr. Boggs, and we unanimously brought, would like to bring this to, to the board for approval. I have contacted all three of these people, and all three of them were, were very willing to serve, and we definitely appreciate their service to this board. The nominate committee nominated Mr. Sharon Jackson as president, Mr. Russell Wright as vice president, Mr. Tim Lusher as secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. You've heard the recommendation of the nominating committee. Robert Rusev said that also we have the responsibility to allow nominations from the floor. Are there nominations from the floor for any of the three officers? Hearing none, hearing none. Can I get a motion that nominations cease?
Nominations cease, please. Second.
And the slate of the nominating committee be accepted? Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, the nomination cease, and the ones ever nominated be accepted.
All right, is there a second?
Mr. Terrell.
Okay, Jim Terrell, I didn't, I didn't see that. I apologize. We have a motion and a second that num, the, the slate of offices offered by the nominating committee be accepted. There were no nominations from the floor. Are there any discussions related to the nominating committees delay? Are there any discussions? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Secretary, I believe you are called to roll on this one.
David Boggs.
Yes.
Patty Cross.
Yes.
Pete Lee.
Yes.
Paul Looney.
Yes.
Tim Lusher.
Yes.
William May, Jr.
Yes.
Earl Sanderson.
Yes.
Charles Stewart.
Yes.
James Terrell.
Yes.
Russell Wright.
Yes.
Chairman Jackson.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee, Ms. Cross, Mr. Bob. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be special reports from a special select committee. That will be the steering committee, Mr. Cockley, and Mr. Hewitt.
Sure, as I think the commission's aware, the comprehensive plan steering committee has been meeting multiple times over the course of the last, I guess, couple of months to work on drafting an RFP to keep the services of consultants to help us with our, our next comp plan. So what you all have before you is the final draft of the result of that work. And so we, we would hope that the commission would, would take a chance to review that and let us move forward and/or let us know if you've got any suggestions or changes. And then, of course, appreciate the work which will continue as we go forward with planning commissioners that have agreed to serve on that commission, on that committee, I should say, as well as Squire Blackburn, and previously Commissioner Wismann, and now Mayor Wilkerson, who will continue to serve on that committee for us as we move forward with this process. So unless Robert has anything to add, we can take any questions, and, you know, we appreciate the work that that steering committee has done to this point. I think getting the consultant will be a positive thing to move forward, and in advance of the work that we all know is ahead of us, we will thank the committee and the commission for all that as we move forward.
Questions for staff, please. Hearing none, seeing none.
Teron, Teron, sorry, one question. Eric, on, I'm not sure what page it is, the date for responses for the RFP, can you come up with a date yet, because it's, it's left blank?
Yes, we intentionally left that blank, Tim, just to make sure that the, the commission tonight didn't have any changes. So assuming the commission agrees to move forward, I'll get with the city purchasing officer probably tomorrow and see what her turnaround is for getting that added to the paper. And then we'll set those dates in accordance with that, and so Robert and I can chat, or we can all chat now about how long we want that to be out. I think typically for things like this, probably, you know, a few weeks, give or take, to give folks enough time to get responses back to us. And once when we, when we can get that into the paper, that'll kind of be our start date, and then we'll count from there and fill those dates in as we release it. So that was kind of intentionally left blank to make sure we didn't have any holdups and move forward.
Yeah, my only question is, it's February, and I didn't know if that was enough time to get it back. So I think you've answered that. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and you may be right that that final date may end up being an early March date, depending on the newspaper deadlines and things, but we'll, we'll address that accordingly before it goes out.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, well, there are a couple of, two, three things that we need to make sure that everyone understands. Eric and Robert, when we mentioned in, in the RFP, that a RFP or a RFQ is being requested, are those synonymous? Are those the same thing?
No, you know, we refer to this as an RFP, and Robert can chime in. Generally, an RFP is going to be more specific. Per the name, it's a request for proposals rather than a request for qualifications. When you do an RFQ process, it has more to do with check-in boxes about finding a contractor or consultant who just has the requisite experience and qualifications. Whereas in the RFP, it, we go a little bit deeper, hence writing blank the RFP document, because we're expecting to get more of a proposal for their, their scope of services and, and the way that they actually, you know, might, might look upon attacking this, this task. So it is a little bit different. I don't know if, if, Robert, you've got any more to add to that, or if that makes.
I would just simply say that an RFP is more project-specific. RFQ is more for filing for future compilation of, of a series of consultants that you might choose throughout the year.
Okay, in that case, there are several references in the draft to an RFQ. So we need to do a word search and make sure that the RFQs are replaced by RFP, so that we're consistent throughout the document in terms of what we would like to have.
Certainly, we'll, we'll do before we, before we put that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, is there in fact, the RFQ at?
This, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I was asking if in fact, from Robert and Eric, there going to be an RFQ at all, or is that just simply a reference?
No, no, we're only doing the RFP as I understand it. And so I'm, I'm requesting that all references to RFQ be removed.
Right, and, and I think those references came from some of that, that legalese we added at the end from a previous project, and just got missed as we went through the, the document and tried to make everything match up. So, but I can, we can go back through and solve that easily, so we'll be sure to do that.
Yes. Also, I need to ask two questions under the availability of planning documents. Is there an official report of the parcel A and parcel, oh no, parcel B and C that was done? And is it appropriate to include those, that document in here as, as resource?
I think the most appropriate document to, to be included in, in this is already referenced. That's the downtown master plan that referenced the goals of, of the redevelopment parcel B. And so we've already listed that as planning resources that they should make themselves aware of. And I think that'll handle that for now. I don't know that there's anything, if we work through that process, as you all know, anything additional that, if our purposes are responding to the RFP would be necessary.
Okay, I, I'm more concerned about making sure that people don't say that parcel B and C was not disclosed to the recipient. And so we're good. Thank you. Is, on that same page, is it possible to spell out, or the possible respondents, the KSU master plan just fell out, Kentucky State University, and then master plan? Can we, is it possible to do that?
Sure, I'll make a note.
I mean, all respondents might not know who KSU is.
Yeah, fair enough.
All right. In the document, we refer to the planning commission, and we, we refer to the city of Frankfurt. We do not include in that reference Franklin County. Do we need to, since this is a county city, do we need to refer to, reference Franklin County in those statements? It's a question, because I don't know.
So I think in most of the places where we describe the community that this is, that this is going to be, you know, referring to, and we describe the background and overview, we work really hard to make sure we included both Frankfurt and Franklin County. Most of the references, unless I've missed some, where we reference the city of Frankfurt specifically are when we get to the technical part of where they're responding, and it references to the city's purchasing division, because we were just going to house the RFP and the responses at that location. So if you found any other locations in the, in the sort of narrative portion of this, where we refer to Frankfurt and, 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 certainly, we want to correct that, but I know that our intention as we drafted this has been to make sure that as we describe the community that this comprehensive plan relates to, to include both the city and the county. So, like I said, those should be the only references. If we miss one, then please feel free to call it out, and we'll, we'll make a correction.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
There are 20 references to Franklin County within the document, whether it be There are 20 references to Franklin County within the document, whether it be specific to the comprehensive plan or to the county as a whole relating to demographics and population. So as a representative of the county, I'm comfortable with the references to the county and the city and the planning commission.
Okay. That's really what I wanted to hear.
Additionally, I've typed out Kentucky State University at your request. And then also, there were five changes in RFQ to RFP that I've incorporated. I will go ahead and forward those to Mr. Cockley this evening if there's no additional changes.
Okay. Now, do you all, you and Eric, mind disclosing to the planning commission members where you expect if they, if they approve this, the list, the request, like, you know, the Frankfurt State Journal and whatever other locations do you intend to place it?
We'll advertise it as usual in the State Journal, and then it'll be placed on the appropriate place on the city's website. And we will list it as we typically do on the Manstar service, which is a nationwide online service for folks to pursue bids or RFQs, pretty number of things. I would imagine we would then follow with a link that Robert can place upon the county site. And then Robert and I have discussed a little bit, a few other sites that we made place that are low or no-cost places to put things like this. For example, the Kentucky Chapter of the American Planning Association website that we can list it on and have a link there to it. Any more places I'm forgetting, Robert? So in, with our general advertising places, which we've kind of just mentioned, we've, I think both Robert and I, we just discussed it the other day, and we've had pretty good luck getting a robust amount of responses on recent projects. So we feel pretty good about it.
Mr. Jackson, if I may, on behalf of the county, yesterday I had a, an opening of proposals, a request for proposals for the Lakeview Park feasibility study and master plan. I advertised, as required by law, in the State Journal, on the county's website, and also on the Kentucky Chapter of the American Planning Association. The county received seven proposals from both within and without of the state of Kentucky. So we were pleasantly surprised with the terms that we received. And I think that was a good foundation, and I believe that the planning commission will have a similar success in their advertisement.
Good. Thank you. Those were all of the comments that I have. Does any other commissioner have a question? If not, chair will entertain a motion to accept the draft of the steering committee and staff for advertising the RFP for the comprehensive plan update.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, what is the timeline when we're hoping to get all this finished? Especially trying to have several public meetings? Are we hoping to have this finished by the end of the year? When are we hoping to have this all finished?
Well, we will have to wait for respondents to give us their estimated date that they can complete the work. But we're hoping, Mr. Stewart, that we can get it done early fall. We do understand that the statutory timeframe for trying to complete this work is July of 2021. But we anticipate that it'll take us a little longer than that to get all of this work done and written up. But really, the respondents will have to tell us when they believe, based upon our description, they will be able to get all of this completed.
Are we hoping to have several meetings, major public meetings?
Yes. We would expect them to describe for us how they would carry out that work in terms of meeting with the public, getting the public's input, and et cetera, as we move forward with the development of the data and drafting a report. Right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I dropped off that. I may have missed the question, but I did, was curious. We don't have a tentative delivery date. Were you all, is that what you're discussing as far as having any kind of a timeline for when notice to proceed was began and when we kind of anticipated to give bidders or proposers at least an estimate?
I believe, Eric?
Yeah, as I was mentioning before to Commissioner Lusher, we'll, we'll put this out once we get you all's approval and expect to get those respondents back here. If we can have it live and they add it by next week, and we'll probably put that out, I'd imagine, you know, three weeks-ish out, and that would be the date to get responses back. And then in my experience, what we try to do is get those back, have the steering committee score them independently, then we'll get together with our finalists, schedule interviews, and then enter into negotiations so that we can, we can start a relationship with one of those clients. So that's something that, that part of it, we don't have a specific timeline. Obviously, it'll variable between when we can schedule those interviews. But certainly, we'll try to be doing that as quickly as possible, you know, a week or two. And then, you know, as that negotiation happens, the other interesting wrinkle in this process, as you know, is that this will be a planning commission consultant, but there's this additional level of discussion that we'll need to have with both the city board commissioners and the fiscal court in terms of whatever finance, financial asks the commission will make. So we kind of have an extra layer before we can, we can probably have an official, you know, go ahead and sign contracts and all that.
Mr. Looney, is that sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, it feels like we're probably in the May timeframe before they have notice to proceed. So I mean, I would think, expecting anything before the fall seems unrealistic. I was just, you know, curious about estimate if people think you're going to want something delivered in two months or six months, that kind of, usually consultants that, you know, you look at your workload, and we don't have an end date on this or a tentative end date. Just a question.
Yeah, we, we had a lot of discussion in the steering committee on that topic about whether we put a hard end date on it or not. And I think that's the reason that we targeted it, and Mr. Hugh and Mr. Jackson may want to chime in as well, that we would put a general timeline, that we're aiming for the end, you know, that last quarter of 2021. But then obviously, our motivation is the issue of the current plan sort of expiring, if you will. I don't know if that's the most accurate term. And, you know, summer of 2021, but we didn't want to shoehorn somebody in and miss a really, really great consultant because we guessed at a way too short timeline, and we didn't want to have a consultant not even bother to send us an RFP because they immediately looked at a date and said, you know what, I'm not going to do it that quick. So we expect to get some of that discussion in these RFP responses. It'll probably reference some of their timelines. And certainly, whichever, whichever one we negotiate with, that's, that's a key part of that negotiation is, okay, give me your more specific scope of services, timeline, deliverables, and then obviously, the pricing structure. So that'll be forthcoming once we get responses back and enter into negotiations.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
All right, Ms. Cross?
Oh, I was just going to make a motion. Are you ready for the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think I've almost forgotten what I was going to do. But anyway, I would, I would move that we approve the RFP as edited, and that staff goes ahead and analyzes it and starts the advertising process.
Sir, second?
Second.
Moved and properly second, and I'm going to paraphrase Ms. Cross, that the commission accept the draft RFP as edited and to go ahead and issue the RFP. There are discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Robert?
Mr. Jackson, is the commission okay with it being advertised with a deadline for three weeks towards the middle? Or would you prefer a different timeline?
Well, you all mentioned that earlier, and nobody objected to it. So I took that as a comfort level with the timeline that was discussed.
Okay. And then, just so the commission is clear, the steering committee will receive packets and score sheets and then make a recommendation to the planning commission?
Well, that, yes, that was part of the steering committee's responsibility. So we expect to move forward with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Make recommendations at the March meeting or the April meeting?
I can't say exactly when the recommendation would be made, Mr. Stewart, because we, we got to issue it and get responses back. It's got to be out there at least two, three weeks before we can, can do that. That's what, about the middle of March, and then we, it'll probably be April. Other question? Seeing none, Madam Secretary Caldero?
Mr. Box?
Yes.
Ms. Cross? Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much. Staff, we can move forward, and let's hope we can go ahead and get it out and start getting responses to that. As a side note, I requested a piece of information from Ms. McLavick on the audit because we, as a commission, had discussed sharing to the extent that we could the funding for the comprehensive plan with fiscal court and the city commission. And so that's $75,000. Not all, but a portion of that, we can allocate, once we know what the expectation is of the cost is, we can allocate a portion of that to paying for the comprehensive plan with the city and the county being requested to kick in the remaining piece of that. So going to keep that in mind as we move forward. We have a fund balance of 75, but some of that will be needed to pay for expenses of the commission in addition to the comp plan.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, yes.
If I may, and as Mr. McLavick mentioned in his report, the commission had paid, you know, two different times, say, I think it was for insurance because of delays due to COVID and such. Historically, the planning commission sends out invoices to the city and the county for payments in June. And Ms. Sewell, is that going to be also common practice for 2021 that we'll receive, the county will receive an invoice in June for certain expenses?
That's typically what we do. We do mid-June invoices for all operating expenses except for the insurance.
So will that be for the fiscal year 2021?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next item on the business is old business. We don't have any listed, so we'll ask the secretary to please call item number one under the public hearings.
Public hearing, 954 Wilkinson LLC in care of Charles D. Jones is requesting approval for zone map amendment from Low Density Multifamily District RL and General Commercial District CG to High Density Multifamily District RH for the property located at 954 Wilkinson Boulevard. The property can be more specifically identified as PVA map number 061-00-00-080.01. If you're going to testify, you'll need to raise your right hand and be sworn. Do you have power to tell the truth, so to tell the truth, nothing but the truth that you've got?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cockley, would you state your name for the record, please?
Eric Conocle.
And what is your position with the city?
I'm the director of the Planning and Community Development Department.
Have you previously filed a veto with your education and experience outline?
Yes, sir.
Are there any changes to that document?
No, sir.
As a result of your position with the city of Frankfurt, have you reviewed the application request for the 954 Wilkinson LLC to seek a zone map amendment from CG to RL?
Yes, sir. I've reviewed that request for a zone map amendment from CG and RL to RH.
All right. Have you reduced your recommendation to writing?
Yes, sir.
Did you base this report upon your training, education, and experience in the area of planning and as the city planner?
I did.
Are there any changes or additions to the staff report as has been provided to the commission?
I have none. I forwarded to the commission earlier this afternoon and gave you a copy as well of the one written comment we got regarding this item. Other than that, I have no additions.
Is that Mr. Taylor Marshall?
Yes, sir.
Were there any other comments other than the positive comment from Mr. Marshall?
No, sir.
All right. Now, would you briefly give a summary of your staff report, which has been a recommendation for approval to the planning commission?
Sure. So the, the proposed project on the property that's resulted in the zone change request is a multifamily development, 60 total units, 48. There would be apartment buildings on the ridge and then 12 townhome units on the front. The property is currently a little less than two acres and currently zoned, as we've mentioned, CG and RL. It's got a split zoning. We, we've worked with the applicant several months ago, as we do on, I'm looking at the options between conditional uses and zone changes versus administrative approval of development plans for similar conceptual layouts as this. The general commercial zone actually does allow multifamily land uses with a conditional use permit. That sort of complicated review, and I think made it hard both for the applicant, their design team, and staff, because we still had a split zoning issue that resulted in part of the property needing to comply with the bulk density and height regulations of the RL district and part of the property having to be reviewed as a reference to RH, which is what the CG zoning district references when you choose to do multifamily. do multifamily development. After kind of working on it with the applicant, they decided to come back and simplifying the zone change to RH for the entire property to keep review possible and as simple as possible. And obviously to get the bulk density and height they'd like to get to make the project viable. So I've reviewed that and given you my thoughts in the form of the staff report. It's also been reviewed by the TRT members, utilities, and they believe they can provide services. We have comments back from the planning commission's traffic engineer where he references the likely projected trip counts and did not recommend that this would generate enough trips worthy of a traffic impact study. And obviously that the property has immediate access on an arterial roadway to begin with. The property has a future land use designation of suburban business center, which typically focuses on a lot of non-residential commercial development, but also references there may be times within that future land use designation that forms residential use may be appropriate. The commission has in the last 24 months, if some of you that were around all made at least one zone change that I can recall with the same future land use map designation to a multifamily designation. A little bit different, but kind of similar situation where the property is a bit of a transition property between non-residential use and residential. I would also mention that the immediately has a future designation which does overtly support different versions of resident development, including multifamily resident development. Summary of my report, that's what led me to my positive findings and recommendation of approval. So I'll stand down and
Mr. Cockley, one of your cases, I read it, that you reviewed all seven goals of the comprehensive plan and you made positive findings with regard to your review of this project as compared to the comprehensive.
I did indeed.
Are there any issues from the lead to your report?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the report, as well as all of the agency correspondence that was attached to it, be introduced to record in lieu of additional testimony.
Yes, sir. Does any commissioner have questions of Mr. Cockley? Seeing none, does the applicant have questions of Mr. Cockley?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There's one clarification, Mr. Cockley, that I think I need. I'm not sure that I need it, but I think I need it. Did you just state that the size of the property is two plus acres or three?
I believe I stated, unless I misspoke, that it was a little less than than two acres. Actually, and now that I'm looking back at the survey, I misread that. Believe well, this language is a little bit hard to read, actually, on my concept plan, whether it's 1.75 or 3.75. I'd leave it to the applicant to clarify that. I'm sure Charlie knows exactly the acre.
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Jones. Because the question that I really have is this. When I look, I read the information in the deed that was attached to the staff report suggests that the parcel is 4.26 acres. When I look at the application, the applicant simply identified as 3.6 plus acres. Then there's something in there called modern drawing that 3.75 four acres. Just wondering which of those is the correct acreage of the site?
I would defer to the applicant to clarify that for you.
Okay.
Right, and does it say the deed is 4.8 acres?
Yeah, well, we'll ask Mr. Jones to clarify that for us. On page four of eleven, the property is identified as suburban business center. Suburban business center, when we read the definitions there, doesn't, does not identify residential use as a specific use permitted in there or encouraged in there. Is that, am I reading that properly or improperly?
You're incorrect. It does reference in the second land use guideline that mixed-use development of commercial slash office on local floors with residential on upper floors is encouraged when compatible to surrounding neighborhoods and development. And so it's a reference similar to a previous zone change application that came before this board at some point in the last 24 months with a similar application for a smaller number of units, but but a multifamily request within the same future land use designation, as I recall. Some of that language was used to to also help justify that as a transition use based upon that land use guidelines and the surrounding land uses to that piece of property, that that could be an appropriate land use within this land use designation.
Okay. Those were the only two clarifications that I needed. And if I don't see any other hands, we're gonna ask the applicant to please present his case.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Last page online, it's got the planning details. It has the old gravel road. Is that right in front of the apartments? Is that gonna be left or how landscaped or is that gonna be left or how will that be?
Mr. Chairman, those would be development plan issues. We would not address that until we know whether or not we're gonna let this development be approved.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, did you, did you understand Mr. Logan's point?
Right, yes.
Okay.
But Charlie, I had the same question, so let's make sure we bring that up on down the road. I was curious about that myself, the old gravel road.
If, if I might, before Mr. Jones begins, Logan, if you allow me, I would mind the planning commissioners that if we decide that a zone change is to be requested, then at that same time, we should request that a development plan be brought back to the planning commission for its consideration and approved. That's, that's kind of how we get into that part of the discussion. Mr. May?
Just have one question since I'm new to this process, this public hearing, are we actually going to vote on this tonight? Is this, we're just taking testimony tonight?
Well, we're taking testimony and if we ask the legal counsel and the legal counsel tell us that the testimony has not been so great that we cannot and we must await a summary of the testimony, we can take action tonight.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Just for transparency, since Mr. Jones does legal work for me, I just wanted to know, would it be, should I recuse myself or is it okay to vote?
Mr. Logan, I think you should.
Anything.
Mr. May, the regard to recusal is based upon whether or not there is a monetary consideration or whether or not you feel that there's such a close relationship that you could not give a fair and impartial determination.
Okay.
And that I assume would be your call on this matter.
Okay. No, I don't, there's no financial benefit or any benefit whatsoever. I just wanted to disclose in case that was brought up later. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sanderson?
Yes, sir. My question is answered.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we can take your presentation now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Charlie Jones. I represent the applicant on this zone map amendment request. We too have read the staff report and Mr. Cockley's testimony tonight. We would have nothing additional to add to that, and we certainly concur with the staff's report and recommendation. If I can address two issues that came up, one on acreage, Mr. Chairman. The deed, as you recite, does reference 4.8 acres. But, I apologize, I was trying to get back to the deed here. But the deed has exceptions to it. So the first page of these is 4.86, but it says however there's accepted. And then you have four, four exceptions. And after taking those exceptions out, when the highway was widened and other things were done, that's where it gets us down to the roughly 3.6. So we believe the deed is accurate. We attached a early survey of the property to our application also. That survey shows about 3.7 something acres. But there is a sliver of land on the west end of this property that had a little bit of issue about where the exact line was. And we've had it relooked at and believe that the actual acreage is 3.6. So my application references 3.6 acres. It may be some one hundredths of an amount greater, but it is essentially 3.6 acres. On the gravel road, that is not on our property. That is an abandoned roadway. I've actually done a lot of research on for other, another client. But that property right now, I believe, is claimed by the city as an abandoned roadway. But it is not actually on our property. Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the commission. I did note your question about the suburban land use there. We just believe that because the property as it's zoned right now already allows for residential. And even the front being commercial allows for high-density residential. After meeting with Mr. Cockley over, as he said, many months over this, it was better to consolidate it into one land use that we still felt would meet the comprehensive plan because of its current zoning and our intended uses of it. So again, I would welcome any questions from commission members.
Okay. Clarification, Mr. Jones. So given the three acreages that are mentioned in the document, you're comfortable that if we say, oh, this should be approved, that we reference the 3.7 acres rather than the four or the other?
Yeah, there is, there's certainly not 4.8 acres there. And I'm very comfortable with our 3.6 to 3.7 acres encompassing the site.
So you would, you would like to have it say 3.6 to 3.7 acres or just 3.6 plus?
3.6.
Well, you're an attorney. I can't trap you. I'm just trying to make sure that if we make a motion that we do it in the most efficient way.
I certainly understand, and I'm very comfortable with the 3.6, sir.
Okay. Other questions of Mr. Jones?
I have a question. The townhouses are on the front of this property. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
Just curiosity, does the front of them face Wilson Boulevard or do they face inward towards the parking lot?
Right now, they're facing.
Say it's not an issue now, but I'm just trying to save everybody time for the future.
The design, as I've seen right now, does have them facing inwards. Not towards Wilson Boulevard, but towards the interior of the development.
Okay. Just, just as an added comment, Mr. Logan, sorry, I know it's planning a different area, but if everybody remembers, we had problems before when Franklin Square was developed and the addition out front was turned around and the back end of it faced at 127 and everybody was unhappy with that. So you may want to get a clarification of which way those are gonna fade. If we're gonna see the back end of them, we're gonna see the trash cans and everything on Wilson Boulevard versus seeing the front of the property.
Mr. Sanderson, I think we'll get to see all of that and raise questions about it when and if we get to see the development plan based on the motion that's offered when we do it.
I realize that. I'm just trying to save Charlie a headache down the road.
Mr. Chairman, if I didn't know better, I think that Mr. Sanderson was another.
Joe, doesn't he?
That's right. Joe would always try to get us in a position of, I know we can't do this, but.
Well, I know both and I like both.
And so do I.
Mr. Jones, any, well, are there any other questions of Mr. Jones? Seeing none, hearing none? Is there anyone else to speak for or against this request? Seeing none, hearing none? Here, well, we need to ask Mr. Logan and Ms. May, this is, this is the question that we need to ask in terms of whether we act tonight or not. Mr. Logan, have we heard enough testimony that we need to wait for a summary of the public hearing or may we take action tonight based on the level of testimony received?
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, we've had only two witnesses tonight. The testimony extensive and I believe could make a decision. However, if you'd let Charlie go just a little bit longer, I think we could have moved it to another.
I've learned to be quiet.
Well, with that response from legal counsel, we shall entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lee?
I like the motion, we close public hearing. That's my first one, then I'll come back to the next.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Cross, we got a motion by Ms. Lee, second by Ms. Cross, that the public hearing be closed. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
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 Motion, well, I gotta ask for anyone who's against the motion, don't I? Hearing none, motion passes. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman? I like a motion that we recommend to the into, is this city or county? This will be?
This city.
City. Make a motion, we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the zone map amendment based on the findings of fact, one through five. Page 10 of our booklet. For For the approval of a zone map amendment from General Commercial District CG and Low Density family RL to hide this, the multifamily district RH, the property located 954 Wilkson Boulevard.
Second. Moved the property...
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I need, with one condition, I want to amend my motion with one condition, the file of velvet claim comes to this body for approval.
All right. Now, is that the same as the development plan?
Development plan, that'd be fine. Whatever plan you like.
And I second that as well, too, so.
All right, moved the property second, that the commission recommend to city commission that the requested zone map amendment be approved, and that the development plan be brought back to the planning commission for review and approval. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, does that motion include adopting the staff report as the summary of the public hearing?
Mr. Lee, can we add that to your motion?
Yeah, I put the positive findings of fact on page 10 of the packet.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Quick question. I'm not completely familiar with the rules of the procedure, but since Mr. Lee made a motion to amend his motion, and I believe Mr. Sanderson seconded it, do we not need to dispose of that amendment first?
By robbits, we're supposed to, but we've, in the past, kind of combined all of those, Mr. Mayor, but, Mr. Logan?
I was just trying to get familiar. That's why I said I don't know the rules of procedure as well.
Well, I think that Mr. Sanderson stated that he accepted the amendment that was brought on by Mr. Lee, so I believe we can vote on it, Mr. Chairman, because his amendment is on the record.
Okay.
Am I correct, Mr. Sanderson? Did you not?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
David Box?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Paul Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Madam Secretary, when you finish, if you'll call the next item on the agenda.
Public hearing. Stephen and Elizabeth Dupree, Catherine and Matthew Knight, are requesting approval of a zone map amendment from Rural Residential District RR to Agricultural District AG for 10.166 acres of property at 827 Snively Road. Tract is more specifically identified as PVA map number 108-00-00-00-9.00. This is a county item. If you are going to testify, you need to be sworn, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the true self of God?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Judah, would you state your name for the record, please?
Ben Judah.
And, Mr. Judah, what is your position with the County of Franklin?
I'm the planning supervisor.
And as the planning supervisor for the county, did you review an application before us tonight for a zone change and a zone map amendment from Rural Residential RR to AG on the property at 827 Snively Road here in Franklin County?
I did.
And have you previously filed your veto with the board as to your education and experience?
I have.
And are there any additions to that curriculum veto tonight?
No, sir.
In your position as the planner, did you also reduce your recommendation of a staff report to writing?
I did.
And in that staff report, did you make a recommendation to the planning commission?
I did.
Are there any deletions to the recommendation?
No.
Would you mind giving a brief summary to the commission of the content of your staff report and the basis upon which you recommend approval?
Sure. So, the subject property is 10.166 acres. It is located just west of the Scott County line in the northeast corner of Franklin County. The present zoning is rural residential, and it's in an area of the county that is surrounded by other RR rural residential zones and areas primarily agricultural and residential in nature. The impetus of this request before you tonight, the county wanted to utilize the property for equine assisted therapy center. Last year, we brought an item for a text amendment before the planning commission. This was a little bit of a unique request from staff's position, and we needed to get some language added to the zoning ordinance in order for us to be able to adequately process this request. And so, based upon the text amendment being approved in September by Franklin County Fiscal Court, the land use table was amended with, as noted, special condition number 26 in the agricultural zone, which basically suggests that equine assisted activities and those related activities will require a conditional use permit. Going back to the report for the zone change, the future land use map does indicate the subject property to be for rural activities. Throughout the analysis of the report, staff has all positive findings, and entailed at the end of the report, I do have two findings of fact, one being the comprehensive plan, future land use plan designates the property as rural activities, and two, the agricultural zone is an appropriate zone for the rural activities designation. And based upon those findings, staff recommends the item be approved, and I'd like to have my report and my testimony be entered into the record, and at that, I'll be happy to take any questions that the board may have for me.
You're muted, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chair, I said, I have no further questions of the witness, and turn him over for questions from the commission.
Other questions by commissioners of, Ben? I don't see any. There's a, I guess I got a couple of questions for clarification. One, all of the 10.166 acres are in, located in Franklin County, correct?
That's correct.
And in your findings of fact, do you agree that the zone map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan?
I do.
That's not among the findings of fact, so do you mind, or would you like us to consider that a third finding of fact?
Yeah, I think that that would be an appropriate finding.
Okay. I think that those were the only ones that I had, Mr. Judah, in terms of clarity. Is the applicant available?
Yes, I believe so.
Does the applicant have questions of Mr. Judah?
I do not have any questions. We started this process last April, and he has been very helpful through this whole process as we've had to work through it, and we're very appreciative of him.
Thank you.
Being no other questions, we would now ask that the applicant present the case for the application. And, Mr. Dupree, I've not seen you appear before the planning commission before, so let me say to you that inviting you to speak does not mean that you have to give us an expose, but you should add information that you believe is absolutely necessary to carry your case. But if you agree with the staff report, you should state that you agree with the staff report, and we move on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the staff report. It was very thorough, and I agree with the staff report, and I will stand by that.
Other questions by staff, I mean by commissioners of Mr. Dupree? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Logan, you have any questions of Mr. Dupree?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not.
It's not the question, our regular question is, have we had sufficient testimony that requires us to wait for a summary, or can we take action tonight?
Mr. Chairman, in my opinion, we have sufficient testimony tonight to go forward without the requirement of filing a summary.
All right. Chair, we'll accept the motion, please.
So moved.
Well, Mr. Wright, we got to go a little bit further then.
Oh, do you? Okay, I'll let somebody who can paralyze better than me to go ahead and make the motion, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Let me say it this way, we got to close the public hearing, we got to...
Got to be a little bit more, okay. We'll let Mr. Lee go in there, and he's going to pipe in there for us. I think he's...
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to close the public hearing. We adopt the, in lieu of summary, we adopt the staff report.
Staff report?
Yes, adopt the staff report in lieu of summary, and findings of fact number one and two on page 12, recommend the zone map amendment from rural residential to agricultural district AG, 10.166 acres of property at 7th Snively Road. Recommend that for the magistrates.
Okay, well, Mr. Lee, before we go forward with a second, would you, do you mind including in that sense, Mr. Judah agreed to it, that we add a finding of fact that the proposed zone map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan?
I don't mind, but it says, step first, it says the comprehensive plan, future land use plan designates property for rural. Are you going to agree? That's fine. I'll add findings of fact number three, that the conference plan, that the property designation agrees with the conference plan.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved the property second, that we close the public hearing, adopt the staff report as a summary of the public hearing, also adopt findings of fact as noted, and recommend to fiscal court that the requested zone map amendment be granted. Question? Questions on the motion? Questions on the motion? One question. Do we want the development plan to come back to the commission for review?
I don't think there's a development plan to review, but we have a conditional use permit in front of us tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, the development plan would not be appropriate now. We need to look at the conditional use, which is the next item.
I think that's the next item, Mr. Jackson, please.
Okay. Discussion? Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Box?
Yes.
Ms. Cross? Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Would you call the next item, please?
Public, yes. Public hearing. Finn Glen Farm LLC is requesting approval of a zone map amendment from Rural Residential District RR, Agricultural District AG for 200 acres of property at 2100 Harvey Land Road. The tract is more specifically identified as PVA map number 046-00-00-00-7.00. This is a county item. If you are going to testify, you need to raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Judah, would you once again state your name to the record, please?
Ben Judah.
And Ben, what's your position with the County of Franklin?
I'm the planning supervisor.
And as the planning supervisor, have you reviewed the application and request for a conditional use permit from Mr. Dupree and Mr. Miss Knight with regard to property at 827 Snively Road?
So, your question was about Snively, but the item before us is the Finn Glen Farm?
Excuse me. All right. Have you reviewed it with regard to that property?
I have.
All right. And as a result of that, have you performed a staff report with regard to it?
Yes.
And with this Finn Glen Farm LLC, do you have any additions or deletions to your staff report?
No additions to the report.
All right. And have you made recommendations with regard to conditions for this approval?
I have recommended that the item be approved.
All right. And with regard to that, there are findings of fact which have been set out in this recommendation. Are you still, are there any additions to those findings of fact?
No, sir.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman. Move the staff report be filed.
No order. No order. Uh, Mr. Judah, are you prepared to do a short summary of the...
I am. Sure. So, uh, the request before you tonight, the applicant would like to rezone the property from RR rural residential to agriculture. Uh, in my discussions with the applicant, the, uh, main intent behind the rezoning is to keep the property as a farm. Uh, the idea is so that they can increase the agricultural operations and the ag zoning, uh, provides greater flexibility for them to be able to do so. Um, the property is about 205 acres. Uh, it's a large farm tract. It's in the, uh, northwest quadrant of Franklin County located along Harvey Land Road. Um, the surrounding land use is a mixture of residential agricultural uses and the property and its surroundings is currently zoned rural residential. Um, throughout my analysis, I do have all positive findings within the, the goals related to the comprehensive plan. Future land use map designates the property as well for, uh, rural activities. Um, the staff report concludes with two findings of fact. Um, one, comprehensive plan, the future land use map designates the property for rural activities and two, uh, the agricultural zone is an appropriate zoning district for rural activities, land use designation. Uh, based upon those findings, I am recommending the item be approved and I'd be happy to enter my report and testimony to the record and I'll answer some questions if you all have any.
Mr. Judah, uh, in light of the last application we just had, would you also indicate whether or not you believe the request for this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan?
Uh, yes, I would agree with that statement.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have questions of Mr. Judah? Any commissioner have questions of Mr. Judah? If not, does the applicant have, uh, a question of Mr. Judah?
Mr. Chairman, this is Preston Cecil. I'm a member of Finn Glen Farm. Uh, I really don't, uh, we agree, obviously agree with the findings of the staff a, and his conclusions as far as the property and the rezoning. Uh, so, uh, we, we are in agreement on those conditions.
Mr. Cecil, do you always, do you also agree with the conditions placed upon the approval?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Well, I, I had a question. I'm just curious, if it's a farm now and it's been used for farming, why do we need a zone change so that it can still be a farm?
Uh, as, as Mr. Judah pointed out, uh, Mr. Chairman, the ag district gives us a little more flexibility on agricultural uses such as, uh, forestry. We're planting chestnut trees. That's a principal permitted use in ag and not in rural residential. And so there are some things that we can do there that we can't do in rural residential. Uh, so, and we're still figuring out exactly what we want to do, but we have just greater flexibility in that zone.
Okay. In that case, uh, thank you for answering that question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll ask the applicant to present his case for the change in zoning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, uh, we, we do agree with the, uh, staff report and the findings. Uh, we do believe, believe that the, uh, ag zoning is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. And, uh, because of that and the fact that we are looking for a little bit more flexibility in the zoning, uh, we would, uh, request approval of this, uh, application.
Does any commission members have questions of Mr. Cecil?
Uh, I, I do. Uh, Mr. Cecil, it appears to be that you're, you're, by going from rural residential to ag, you're going to expand the size of a lot. You have to have a larger lot now. Is that, is that part of your mission to, to keep? Is that, am I mis, I, I think I saw that it had to be from what? Rural residential's 1.5 acres per lot and ag is now 5. And that part of your mission to protect and keep future land from being zoned into maybe a subdivision or is that, is that?
Yes, sir. I mean, we, we don't have any plans to, to, uh, build any other additional lots, but I think that is, I think it's, uh, what you're saying is correct. It's actually we're gonna require bigger, you know, space for, for lots, but yet our goal is to keep the property agricultural and for those uses, yes.
All right, okay.
Does any other commissioner have a question of Mr. Cecil? Staff have any questions of Mr. Cecil?
Not at this time.
Hey, does anyone else, uh, wish to speak for or against this request? Hearing none, seeing none.
No, Mr. Chairman, I do believe there is somebody, uh, participating tonight, uh, Mr. Bishop, who is here to, to speak in regard to this matter. Mr. Bishop, are you here? I believe he was here earlier. I'm not sure if he's still on.
Oh.
He's muted.
Mr. Judah, would you like to advise the commissioners what you received from Mr. Bishop?
Sure. Uh, I, so, um, Mr. Bishop is an adjoining property owner, so as a part of our legal processes of zone changes, he was notified with the change and, uh, we had some email correspondence back and forth and, uh, Mr. Bishop had some concerns. I'll go ahead and I'll read the email, one of the emails I've received from Mr. Bishop. Says, uh...
Mr. Judah, if you would, would, we, will you ask the commission if they'd like to accept the information from Mr. Bishop?
Sure, yes. I will happily read this email if you all would like to have it entered into the record.
I would.
I would suggest that we have Mr. Bishop's comments read into the record so that the commission would be aware of any comments or concerns, uh, that he have.
Okay. All right. Are you ready? Should I go ahead? So he says, uh, my, my response...
Mr. Judah, I believe Mr. Jackson is asking Mr. Bishop to comment.
Okay, sure. I believe he's the RB shown on the screen. I don't know if he can hear us or, or if he's having some technical difficulties.
Well, he's muted. And, and I guess, uh, rather than him saying that, uh, Mr. Logan, since that correspondence came in and our action in the past has been to make that available to each commission member for, uh, review and to give it as much or little weight as it deserved in their mind, can we, uh, should we have, uh, Mr. Judah go ahead and read it?
Mr. Chair, if the witness is here and can testify, I would prefer that he do that. If he is unable to, Mr. Judah obviously can read into the record and if that is insufficient, the individual that sent it can by phone or other matter contact this meeting and let us know whether he agrees or doesn't.
I'm presuming that he has heard what I've heard and the other commissions have heard, so, and I don't, uh, hear anything.
Well, let's let Mr. Judah read it into the record then, so we at least have that comment.
Sure, okay. So, um, he says, got it, thanks. My response is, and this was, I'll give a little pre-background. Um, I said that, um, you know, if he has any comments or concerns he'd like to contribute. If he's unable to participate, which he apparently is at this moment, um, I'd be happy to take some comments from him. So these are those. Got it, thanks. My response is that Finn Glen Farm and all adjoining property and most of the farmland in Franklin County is RR, thus changing Finn Glen Farm to AG constitutes spot zoning. Also, AG increases the possibility that additional houses can be built on Finn Glen Farm, which could be built overlooking my property, which is objectable to me. While I am aware that changes occur, this is a change that I do not want to happen in my front yard. My son Kevin, while not directly adjacent property owner to Glen, Finn Glen Farm, excuse me, owns and lives on property in the same river valley that is overlooked by Finn Glen. He objects to residences overlooking his home. So, uh, that's basically concludes and ends up his statement there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you want me to respond to that, uh, I can, uh, whatever the correct procedure is going forward. Uh, it, it's not spot zoning because, uh, the, the zoning we requested is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. I think that's, that's pretty clear. And then I think, uh, I, I'm actually remote from out of town and, and just got this email, uh, last night, but I believe, uh, that the, the change from RR to ag doesn't, uh, allow any increase in the amount of, uh, property, you know, homes that could be built on the property. And we don't have any, uh, we're not gonna, we don't plan on doing that anyway. And if we did, we'd have to get all that approved through the appropriate application. So, uh, we don't see that as an issue.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Judah, do you have any further comments?
Uh, just was gonna make a point of clarification for Mr. Cecil. You at this time are not planning to construct any additional residences on site?
No.
Well, uh, Mr. Cecil, in, in your elevation right there, I, I'm familiar with that, that some land out there. Uh, it, your elevation is a little bit higher than, than Mr. Bishop. He's down on Stony Creek. I know the area. Are you, so you're, you're somewhat higher elevated right there at that point, aren't you?
We're concerned, yes, sir. We're concerned.
You're well above the, the Stony Creek Valley and the bottom in there and, you know. So I, I've, I know where Mr. Bishop's place is and all due respect to him, I understand his, his concerns over, but yeah, that's, you're, you're setting up pretty high, so...
That's correct, sir, as well as we don't have access to Stony Creek, uh, on that side anyway.
Okay. Let's make sure that we don't get into, uh, commissioners testifying, uh, about anything and so...
Okay, my, my, okay, my familiar with the property, okay, I'll, you can strike that. I, I just am, uh, I was, I, I brought that up. I, I didn't think that would be something that couldn't be brought up into question, uh, if it was, uh...
Well, it, it's just that...
Chairman, may I ask a question, Mr. Judah, for clarification?
Yes, sir, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Judah, is in fact the requested zone change to AG more restrictive or less restrictive than RR with regard to residential development?
So that is kind of an interesting question. In terms of density, you could argue that agricultural zoning would be less dense because of the minimum lot size is five acres as opposed to RR being 1.5 acres. However, there is a caveat in the zoning ordinance that does allow for the agricultural zoning to permit multiple dwellings on the same tract, whereas in the RR zone, it would only allow for one dwelling per tract.
How many dwellings could you put on five acres?
Um, I think that it would depend on whether or not it was on sewer or not. And if it were on, if it were not on public sewer, uh, the health department generally would suggest 1.5 acre per dwelling. So it'd be less than five.
Be exactly the same as RR.
Due to the health department restrictions.
Yeah.
Yes, but the difference is the number on the same specific tracks. That's the primary difference.
You can't allow more housing on in agriculture, is that what you're saying?
Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that question, please?
Are you saying that one exception, other than you can under RR? Is that what you're saying?
If I heard that correctly, the, uh, that you, the number of units is, would be similar without public sewer due to the health department's requirement of 1.5 acres per septic.
So you could put, so you could put three on a five acre, uh, ag lot. I mean, if you've got, is that, is that the same? Is there, is there similar? I mean, are we, if you do, if you do, so that all things considered, they're gonna be on a septic tank and you can have a 1.5 acre lot. Therefore, could you have three homes and be 4.5 acres on, on a, on a five acre lot?
In the ag zone, theoretically, yes.
Okay.
You can't do that in RR.
The, in the RR, it would have to be on separate subdivided lots.
But the lots would be 1.5 acres, so you, it would be basically the same, correct?
Yeah, yes.
You couldn't put a two and a couple 1.5 on a, on a five acre. You couldn't put, that'd be, that would be, you couldn't have, it could never exceed 1.5, no matter what you put on the, the five acre lot, right? You couldn't have a two and two 1.5s, you know, which would be five acres. Uh, I, I...
Uh, actually, you could, Russ, uh, Mr. Wright. The 1.5 is a minimum.
Minimum, okay.
Five, if you, if you're doing RR and the five is a minimum lot size if you're doing AG.
Right. Okay.
Okay. On this one, Mr. Logan, you need, well, you need to, to tell us if, uh, we've, we've violated the, uh, presentation. You have enough words to, to require a summary.
Mr. Jackson, I believe we've talked ourselves into a summary on this one. There are questions and numerous issues, people retestifying on things. I think we need to have a summary.
All right. Mr. Lee?
Uh, I'll give somebody else a chance.
No, you're the go-to guy. Go for it.
Oh, don't worry about it. We, we...
You're the long cap down this, pal, enjoy.
Let the chairman, let, let the chairman, uh, go at it. Ms. Cross, you have testimony or can I do the, do the motion?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bishop is back. Does, Mr. Bishop is back. Does that make any difference in where we are?
Well, let me ask Mr. Logan. He's, he's still muted.
No, I'm not.
But we can move on. We presume that this bishop was there with, in, in the document.
If Mr. Bishop is there...
I don't think he knows that.
Ask him if he would like to testify. Or is Ms. Cross just indicating she thinks he does?
This is...
Bishop yet. Is he, is he hooked up and can he testify?
Again, he, he's not, he's not, he's muted, I think.
He is.
He's not like me.
He's trying to talk, but he's still muted. Mr. Bishop, if you would, uh, look in the left-hand corner of your computer screen and, uh, push on that, that microphone there, you can speak. We can't hear anything you're saying. We still can't get him. We cannot hear you, Mr. Bishop. Your, your, your mic is muted, is silenced.
Red dot.
Mr. Chairman, break the mic motion, everybody, sorry.
Okay, well... Okay, well.
I thi, I think it would be who must at least let him know that his email was read.
Okay. Mr. Bishop, your email or your letter has been read into the record. The planning commission members are aware of your concerns. So we're, since we can't, uh, speak with you, we're going to, uh, move forward. The chair will offer the motion that the public hearing be closed. Item be tabled for the secretary to prepare a summary of the public hearing and that we make this item up at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
If they're moved improperly second, is there discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion. Have been, uh, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Box.
Yes.
Ms. Cross. Yes. Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Booney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Asked unanimously.
Okay. The next item is, uh, new business. Uh, Ms. Stewart, when you get a moment, could you use, uh, our item of new business, please?
In accordance with Articles 4, 5, and 15 of the Franklin County Zoning Ordinance, Stephen and Elizabeth Dupree, Catherine and Matthew Knight are requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the operation of equine assisted activities for the property located at 827 Snively Road. The property is more particularly or specifically identified as PBA map number This is a county item.
And is it Mr. Judah, uh, Mr. Hewitt doing this?
I'm, I got it.
Okay, uh, we don't need to, uh, certify you, Mr. Judah. You've already been, uh, certified. So before you start, you need to make sure when you do this item that, uh, we clarify whether the conditional use is for the existing, uh, zoning by if the conditional use is for the proposed zoning of the property. So we can keep that, keep that clear, uh, straight.
Sure. All right. So, um, I guess I could go ahead right off the bat and answer that, that, uh, this condition of use is and does pertain to the earlier agricultural zone change request uh, based upon the text amendment from August last year that was passed in September by fiscal court, uh, that this use, uh, would be listed under the land use table as noted condition, special, uh, special noted, noted special condition, sorry. Number 26 in agricultural zoning, which essentially requires that this use, uh, obtain a conditional use permit. So, um, and then also I'll go back to the little background as to why, uh, the, uh, planning commission is hearing this as opposed to the board of zoning adjustment. Uh, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance, section 5.05A. Uh, at the time of filing an application for a zone map amendment, the applicant may elect to have any variances or conditional use permits for the, uh, for the same development be heard and finally decided by the planning commission at the same public hearing. So, um, Mr. Chairman, your question earlier as to whether or not this is for the RR or the ag. It is for the ag, uh, for the, uh, for the, for the zone change that you all have recommended be approved. Uh, going through the analysis, um, staff has all positive findings. Um, the applicant states, uh, in terms of, you know, adequate additional traffic, one to two vehicles per, uh, session at a time. Staff feels as though that won't have a negative impact on the local traffic, even though Snively is a small rural road. Um, staff had, uh, based upon the facility review of the zone change, uh, additional facilities are not anticipated and services can be provided. Uh, uh, there is some off-street parking proposed for this use. Minimal parking for spaces is suggested, uh, based upon what the applicant has requested. Uh, and that parking shall be screened in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, after making a site visit, it was apparent that the parking area is at a different elevation than any adjoining residences. So, uh, screening, uh, won't necessarily be required. Staff does have five, uh, recommended conditions, and I'll go ahead and I'll read through those now. Uh, the first, that a business license will be required from the county. Two, the condition use is permitted only at 827 Snively Road. The conditional use is granted only to Stephen and Elizabeth Dupree, Ma, uh, Matthew and Catherine Knight of Maine Embrace Equestrian Center to allow the use of the property for equine assisted activities. Four, the conditional use is not transferable, and any changes in ownership or use will make this approval null and void. And five, the hours of operation shall be limited from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday. Um, I am recommending this be approved. Um, let's see, I did have one other thing I wanted to mention that the, um, the board, or sorry, the commission sees fit can also, uh, I didn't put it in my recommendations because I would leave it up to you all to decide, but you may also want to consider limiting the number of participants at a time. I didn't, uh, want to handcuff the applicant to any number, so I didn't put it in, um, my recommendations, but I'll leave it up to you all to decide upon that. And with that, uh, I'll open it up to discussion.
I do have a question, Mr. Judah. I, I don't know the, uh, condition number two, the conditional uses only permitted at 827 Snively Road. Well, what, what, where else could it be? If that's, that's what's proposed, how, how does that, am I, you know, why, why, why is that, is only?
Yeah, so, um, the conditional uses generally run with, um, they don't necessarily run with, uh, the land. They're kind of granted to the owner. If, uh, you know, the owner were to move to another location, then that operator wouldn't be able to take it with them. They'd have to go through the conditional use process again if they were to move to another location.
Okay.
Another question.
Yes, uh, Ben, on, um, the condition number five, hours of operation, uh, do we need to address Sunday as well?
Uh, that was basically, those numbers came from my discussions with the applicant who said that they may occasionally have a Saturday event, uh, or, you know, set training or therapy session, I should say. Uh, they didn't mention having anything on Sunday, so I just put that as what, basically from what they have, uh, spoken to me about.
Then I guess my next question is, do we need to address Sunday? Um, as it's, as it's written, we're conditioning the other, uh, six days of the week. Sunday appears to be no conditions on it at all. I'm not saying they're planning on doing anything on Sunday, but since we've restricted the other days, does Sunday need to be addressed, and should we?
Well, the number five does read, it shall be limited, uh, from, uh, a certain time and on those certain days. So I would take that to mean that it would just not be allowed on Sunday. But, uh, if you would like to ask the applicant if they have any plans for Sunday, and if we need to address that, then, uh, the applicant might be able to speak to whether or not they need Sunday to be included.
Mr. Lusher, uh, unless we specifically grant Sunday, it is not permitted because it's just a conditional use. So, uh, he won't, we added, otherwise it's Monday through Saturday.
Very helpful, Logan. Thank you.
Mr. Le, uh, Mr. Chair, how about if we just said hours of operation shall be limited to rather than from? I think that would take any question marks out of it. I'm going to.
You have any difficulty with the substitution of words?
I don't have any problem with it if it provides more clarity to everyone.
I think it might.
I agree.
So we substitute the word "to" for the word "from", and it'll read the hours of operation shall be limited to at 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday.
Noted.
Okay. Other questions, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant when that time comes, please.
Okay, well, it'll be, it'll be here shortly. Uh, with the applicant, please, uh, present their request.
Um, our request is pretty well stated in the report that Mr. Judah made. Um, and we will stand by that report. We're just, um, starting our little farm here and wanted to have some equine assisted activities. And so he and I have talked about the very different aspects of it, and he put that into the report.
Okay, do you have any, 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 uh, concerns about the conditions that were enumerated by staff?
Well, I do not have concerns. The one thing that, um, we talked about is that, um, part of the equine assisted activities we wanted to do was having, um, I'm, I happen to be an educator in Fayette County, and we're talking about having, um, a small group of students would be, um, no more than, um, six to eight at a time, no more than two cars. And that's where the two cars came in. We said we would have, um, two vehicles at the most here. And, um, so, um, when he mentioned, um, having clients, my wife is a clinical counselor and does, um, equine assisted therapy, having clients limited to one or two. We would never have more than one or two clients in that case. But with the equine assisted activities, other activities we have, we may have up to six or eight at a time. But that would be no more than two cars.
So you don't have any problem with the conditions?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Other questions of, uh, Mr. Dupree? Mr. Lee.
Mr. Dupree, uh, on the detailed written description and the scope of the purpose, how about working with students K through 12? You also said we're developing programs to work with various populations in the community who would best benefit from the experiences on our farms. We're talking about people that are incarcerated?
Or, um, we're talking about, um, my daughter has a desire to work with, like foster kids, or maybe, um, homeschooling kids as well. Those are some of the ones that we're thinking about.
So you, so you want to put on record that there were no, nobody, by, nothing programs working with, uh, people that are incarcerated on your farm?
We're gonna have a program at this time for that.
It's not what I asked. I asked, are you willing to say that you're not working on, you're not gonna have anybody out there for that? Because probably the three, um, if you're a joint property owners, would probably like to know that for sure, please.
No, I do not have that by the time. I don't, I mean, I just, I'm not, we're, we're still developing our program, and we were talking about different possibilities of what we do with children and so forth, so, now with incarcerated.
The reason I brought that up during the text part, we talked about the possible, possibility of, you know, this could include people that are in car, therapy, working for therapy, bringing people out to the farm that are, um, they're in, they're in prison or in the, in the jail. And I think that would be a concern to some people that live around you, so I'm trying to get that for clarification before I vote on.
If we were to do a kind of program like that, would that be something that we would need to get a conditional use on? And get an applicant, uh, approval of our neighbors?
Problem, what you're, what you're asking for allows it. So, uh, you wouldn't have to get that. And we'd have some, we'd have some people that would be, I would think there's people that would want to know, your neighbors would want to know that, so, um, that's my concern.
Chairman Jackson, if I may.
Mr. Hewitt.
Uh, I believe at the discretion of the commission, they could specifically exclude a certain group as part of the conditional use, and I believe Mr. Logan could, could provide further clarification on that.
Yes, Mr. Hewitt, the commission said that they could exclude a particular use, uh, that they don't, they don't give a conditional permit for certain things if they specify.
Reason I brought that up, commission, is there is, there is equine-based therapy for convicted people, and, and, and I'm not saying it's wrong with it, but I think as a property owner, I was certainly wanting to know if that was the case, that was the potential case before I voted on, on their behalf.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hewitt.
If, if the commission were to specifically exclude a certain group, um, and then in the future, the applicant requested to incorporate that excluded group, they would have to come, um, a brief, back before the board of zoning adjustments for reconsideration. Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir.
I think I understand. That.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm. Um, one thing that, um, Blackburn Correctional Facility has an equine assisted therapy program for, um, inmates, and that's something that we do not want to, um, compete with, and that is not, not fun. I'm doing any kind of equine assisted therapy with inmates.
Okay, I think that answers the question that we need to have answered. Other questions of, uh, Mr. Dupree? Seeing none, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Judah, uh, the chair will give you first shot at, uh, crafting the proper language to exclude.
Sure, so if the board would like to include it in the conditioned uses, uh, in addition to the five in the report, um, the commission could have language similar to the effect of, uh, the therapy activity shall be prohibited to include currently or formerly incarcerated people or something of the like.
Mr. Judah, I don't think we can say formerly incarcerated.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, take, that was us thinking, thinking out loud here, sorry. Uh, yeah, scratch that portion.
Okay, so condition number six, the conditional use, uh, like, uh, license shall exclude convicted individuals. Is that sufficient?
I think you could say currently incarcerated, just because someone's convicted, they may have their civil rights restored, and we can't, I think we're doing that.
I, I agree with currently incarcerated, sure.
Okay. We have six conditions. Mr. Dupree. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Uh, any other questions by commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the picture on page four, uh, so that's the barn there on the left and then the park. That's where the parking spaces would be. And the picture on page four.
On the, yeah, on the picture on page four, so that shows, uh, the main farmhouse. There is a barn structure to the rear there. The parking area is also generally in that left-hand side of your photo. Um, based upon my discussions with the applicant, the primary area where these therapy activities will be occurring will actually be located towards the rear of the property, behind the house and perhaps even behind the barn. I'll let the applicant, uh, clarify that if I'm wrong.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So this is Stewart there committing to building two, uh, an additional parking area to not include where the two vehicles are sitting on the left-hand side of the picture. Other question? Hearing none. Uh, can they get a motion with regard to the request for a conditional use permit?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
Uh, I'll make motion that we approve the applicant's request for continued use permit. Non-existent assisted activities, property located 827 Snively Road with the conditions one through five on page four. And plus the additional condition that equine therapy be limited to exclude, uh, currently incarcerated persons.
Their second. Okay, Ms. Cross, second. Discussion on the motion?
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to include in this condition that it's subject to approval of the zone change by the Franklin County Fiscal Court?
Mr. Lee?
I can add that to the, I can add that, or we can make a second, uh, motion, but, uh, yeah, approval, approval to applicant's quest, um, of prompt move of zone change, Ben.
And I would second that.
Hey, Mr. Logan, is that, is that acceptable?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, because I think that if we don't get the zone changed, we couldn't possibly grant a conditional use. It would have been inappropriate.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Box.
Yes.
Ms. Cross. Yes. Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Looney.
Yes.
Mr. Lusher.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Chairman Jackson.
Yes.
Question passed unanimously.
Okay, uh, there's one thing that I need to mention at this point that is, uh, after the election and that, uh, affects the, uh, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, committee. Uh, membership on the committee now still the, the chairman, that's me, vice chairman, that's Mr. Wright, I believe. Uh, the governor appointee, that's, uh, Mr. May. Mayor of Frankfurt, Mr. Wilkinson. Uh, fiscal court member, that's, uh, Mr. Blackburn. Uh, that's one more person that I'm missing.
Mayor Wilkinson, Wilkinson.
I got him. I, I forgot Ms. Cross. But, uh, those are the members of the, uh, committee will be, uh, setting up a meeting soon, uh, after the, uh, the RFP has been advertised and, and we start getting, uh, responses. So you all need to be prepared to, uh, work that into your calendar and et cetera. And I'd encourage all members of the planning commission to, uh, look for and, and, uh, see the, uh, RFP once it's been, uh, issued. Uh, maybe staff can just send a copy of the RFP to, once it's issued, to the members, members of the planning commission and, and, uh, the committee. There any, uh, other announcements or comments that's, uh, being offered by members of the commission? If not, you need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Properly seconded that.
We, who made the motion?
Uh, Keith did, didn't he? He threw a thumbs up and walked off.
I made the motion.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
Move properly second. My frankly, this motion is non-debatable. And, uh, I'll see you all at the next, uh, juncture. Thank you very much for taking time to participate.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom.